Roll call, please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, if you will all stand, we'll have Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence, and maybe we can think about some of the folks in South Texas and in Florida.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the month of September 2017 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Salina. Oscar Campa, childhood cancer survivor, will read the proclamation.
Okay, do you want to come up to the microphone? Give us your name and your address. Tell us what you're writing, or what you're reading.
I'm Oscar, 2940 Tasker Lane.
Okay.
I'm here to read the proclamation for National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Childhood cancer remains the number-one disease killer of all children, more than genetic anomalies, cystic fibrosis, and AIDS combined. And on average, the treatment for childhood cancer is two years and can last -- two years and can cause serious side effects that may last a lifetime. And whereas every year, more than 15,700 children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer, that is about 43 children in each day, whereas childhood cancer occurs regularly, randomly, and spurs no socioeconomic class, geographic affiliation, gender, or ethnic group. And whereas one in every 285 persons in the United States will develop cancer before his or her 20th birthday, and whereas every year, 2,500 children under the age of 20 lose their lives to cancer, that's an equivalent to seven children every single day. And whereas when a child is diagnosed with cancer, the entire family is forever affected. Therefore, in recognition of support of the patients, families, and professionals leading the fight against childhood cancer, I, KJ Crawford, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim September 2017 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Salina and recognize scalded ribbon as a symbol of childhood cancer. I encourage all citizens to honor young people who have lost their lives to this devastating disease and join the fight against childhood cancer in Salina.
Go ahead with -- and witness whereof. Go ahead.
In witness whereof, I here, here unto, set my hands to cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed on this day, on this 11th day of September 2017.
Very good. Thank you very much for reading this for us, and I have a copy of your proclamation. Do you have any activities this week or this month?
I'm Heidi Feierherm Smith, and I'm the founder of the Love Chloe Foundation. My daughter passed nearly 10 years ago from brain cancer, and we started the Love Chloe Foundation to really help other families and to raise awareness in the community. This year, we've got our 10th Annual Kickball Tournament coming up this Saturday on the 16th. It goes from 8:00 to 8:00. And in honor of our 10th year, we're going to try to set a Guinness World Record. So, we're really excited about this. We need to get 500 people out to the ball fields out on East Crawford, and we'll go into Guinness Book of World Records if we can do that. So, it'll be the most people attempting to kick a kickball simultaneously. So, we've got 500 custom kickballs that we're ready to give away.
Oh, wow.
So, and then we're going to wrap up our Awareness Month and move into October, and we're going to have our first-ever gala and golf event. This event is in memory of Ally Ilert, and it's called Pin Wheels for Ally Gala and Golf, and it's going to be October 7th and 8th. And so, that'll be a lot of fun, and we'll be able to honor another family that's lost a child.
Very important, and thank you very much. And Oscar, if you'll come up, I'll give you a copy of your proclamation.
How old is Oscar?
I don't know. Oscar? Tell us how old you are.
I'm 15 years old.
15.
Well, I'm about to turn 16.
All right. That's important. All right. That is an important day.
Thank you, Oscar.
Okay. Item 3.2, the day of September 16, 2017, as Salina Day for Kansas Wesleyan Football in the city of Salina. Christian McQueen, senior football player, will read the proclamation.
Christian.
Maybe Christian can sing the proclamation.
Whereas Kansas Wesleyan was founded in Salina in 1886, beginning a town-and-gown relationship that has provided wonderful benefits to both parties. Whereas Kansas Wesleyan has provided a college educational opportunity for students in Salina, has contributed to the cultural climate of the city with music and theater programs, contributed to the quality of life by providing college athletics contests to attend, has provided a significant economic impact to the community and a part-time entry level and college-educated workforce for the community. Whereas the Salina community has provided a great place for Kansas Wesleyan University students to attend college with access to part-time jobs, internships, and potential full-time employment upon graduation. It also provides an attractive community for faculty and staff to live and work. Whereas the football program has been a significant focal point for Kansas Wesleyan and the Salina community since the first games in 1893. Whereas the university, with the help of the community, has invested in the Graves Family Sports Complex, providing an outstanding venue for fans to attend college football and soccer games. Whereas the current football program, under the direction of Coach Matt Drinkle, continues to bring pride to the university and the Salina community with athletic success, academic achievement, and community service. Last year, the football program completed more than 2,300 hours of community service in Salina. So now, therefore, I, KJ Crawford, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the day of September 16, 2017, as Salina Day for Kansas Wesleyan Football. The city of Salina encourages all citizens interested in college football, Kansas Wesleyan University, or family entertainment to attend Kansas Wesleyan's games at the Graves Family Sports Complex on this date. The Kyle Football Team hosts St. Mary's Spires in an opening of KCAC contest with a 6:00 p.m. kickoff.
Thank you. And I appreciate the invitation to be there. However, I'll be out of town that week, and I'm, I think, probably Vice Mayor.
I will be there, and I'm looking forward to flipping the coin.
He takes my place several times, and if not, there'll be one of the commissioners there for sure, I'm sure. Are there any other activities that you're looking for, for that day or for the week?
For that day?
Anything else special?
I want to thank Christian and the rest of our captains and Coach Beal for being here as part of this, accepting of this proclamation here, and thank you, Mayor, for this as well. I'm Mike Herman, the Director of Athletics, and we are, in addition to the game, you know, tailgating and food always goes with football, and we have a number, a couple of food trucks doing a food truck fair as part of a tailgate from 4:00 to 6:00, and then the game at 6:00 o'clock, and it should make for a fun evening, lots of great family entertainment, and great for people of Salina to come out and enjoy an evening of college football.
Sounds like a lot of fun, and I was there last year, and I'll miss it this year.
Yeah. We're glad that Commissioner Ryan will step in in your place. Thank you.
Christian, if you'll come up, I'll give you a copy of your proclamation.
Mayor, could I ask just one thing?
Sure.
Could we, could we get the names and where you're from, from the players and coach?
And then also, Oscar's brother and sister, if we could get their names as well, and
mother, when we go through, so whichever order, that'd be great.
Good, sounds good.
I'm Bryant Beal. I'm an assistant football coach at Kansas Wesleyan. I'm originally from Rockford, Illinois. I'm in the NBA program now. That's what brings me down here. Now, I live on 624 Whitting Hill Avenue.
Great, thank you.
My name is Tyler Welch. I'm from Santa Barbara, California, and I'm playing wide receiver for the Coyotes, a senior.
Good, good. It's better here than in California.
Garrett Walker, from Huguenin, Kansas, senior, and I play defensive line for Kansas Wesleyan, also an education major. Thank you.
Great.
I'm Troy Ward. I'm from Manhattan, Kansas. I'm a senior, play linebacker on the Coyotes, and I'm an accounting major. So, thank you.
Good, good.
I'm Caleb Whitehair. I'm actually from Salina, Kansas, so thank you. It means a lot that you guys are doing this. I'm a senior, and I'm a physical therapy major, and I play tight end.
We need lots of physical therapy, believe me. I know.
My name is Christian McQueen. I'm from Los Angeles, California. I play defensive end for the Coyotes, and I participate in various extracurricular activities here on campus, so this means a lot.
Thank you, Christian. Just give us your name.
This is Naomi.
Yes.
One of sisters of two. Older sister was at a dental appointment, but she's 10. She goes to Coronado.
Can you see her name?
This is Nicholas. He goes by Nico. He is eight years old, and he's a third grader at Coronado. And my name's Elizabeth Campa, and I, we live at 2940 Tasker Lane here in Salina. I'm actually an RN in the Surgery Department at Salina Regional Health Center, and I'm also a Kansas Wesleyan alumni, graduated in 2006. It's been a while. But a little bit behind Oscar's story, he was diagnosed in 2013, actually in the month of September, which is ironic because it's Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and the month of his birthday. Like you said, he has upcoming birthday. So, he was diagnosed, it's called osteosarcoma, which is a bone cancer. It's a rare disease, rare bone, or childhood cancer disease, and affected his upper arm, which is his humorous. Underwent chemo, 10 months of chemo, had reconstruction, where they put an implant in there to try to salvage his arm. After 10 months of chemo, one of our follow-up appointments, he got evaluated, and they found the cancer up higher in the scapula. So, at that time, they deemed it necessary for a chance of survival to have an amputation. So, he had a 3/4 amputation, which they took the clavicle, the shoulder, the scapula. And he's been getting treatments at KU Medical for the last five years. We've been in remission. It's going to be two years in December since his last chemo treatment. So, since 2013, we've been back and forth, living in hospitals or working in hospitals. But he's a fresh sophomore out at South High. He's on the soccer team, so he's very, he loves soccer. He eats, breathes, and sleeps soccer, so if you ask him a soccer question, he can give you all the information about that.
Keep strong, keep strong, Oscar.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, thank you. Very much.
One last quick question. Are you going to be singing the National Anthem at the game on Saturday night?
I will.
All right. I would encourage anybody that hasn't been to a game at great stadium, where Mr. McQueen sings the National Anthem, you're in for a treat and a great game.
All right. Thank you very much, all of you. It's great to see you out here.
Good luck Saturday.
Yes, and thank you, Oscar, and stay strong. I'm also a cancer survivor, so. Okay, Citizens Forum, if there's anyone here who would like to come to the podium and give their name and address and talk to the commission about anything in particular, now is the time. Okay, don't see anything. We have no public hearings, and item scheduled for a certain time. We'll go on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 28, 2017.
Okay, I'll, does anyone have anything on the agenda, or on the consent agenda, or the minutes they want to change? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, Administration?
Item 7.1, approve resolution number 17-7477, authorizing the offering for sale of water and sewage system revenue refunding bonds, Series 2017, including the approval of a fiduciary agreement for municipal advisory services specific to this revenue bond refunding action with George K. Baum &amp; Company.
Is there anything in particular that any commissioner has anything to say? And Mr. Gage, would you like to report on that?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to. Have I got a deal for you? When was the last time you heard that, right? In this case, we do have an opportunity for the city to save a little bit of money. Back in 2011, the city issued $11,125,000 in water and sewage system revenue bonds, Series 2011, with a 20-year repayment schedule. Those bonds are a little different than your typical general obligation bonds. Your GO bonds rely on the full faith and credit of taxation of the city to repay them. In this case, revenue bonds rely on the revenue stream, which in this case is your utilities fund, so relies on the operational strength and health of the utility fund to repay them. At that time, the coupon interest rate was about 4.33%, and that was actually pretty good. However, interest rates have come down some since that time, so it creates an opportunity to basically pay off the remaining balance of the bonds and potentially to save some time within the same timeframe, within the same 20-year period. And so, when we look at bond refunding, typically you want to save at least 3% to 5% of the net present value of the principal. We believe that that's very possible in this case. And our financial advisor, George K. Baum, and David Artterbury is here with George K. Baum, believes that we're probably in a position to do that. And so, after reviewing that, and you, of course, had a recent study session on that, we believe we can probably hit the 5% mark or more in the net present value by refunding the 2011 bonds. Overall, the total savings is estimated to be somewhere between $600,000 and $700,000 between now and 2031, as a result of refunding these, and you would realize the savings in the utility fund annually with a reduced debt service from there. We've included a bond, revenue bond refunding calendar in the resolution that authorizes the bond refunding action. It has certain parameters. If you recall, one of the things that we addressed, and in most cases, we addressed the approach towards the refunding. Usually, with GO bonds in particular, we'll usually have a bid approach to offering those bonds for sale. In this particular case, because it's a refunding and because the market can change, we felt that the negotiated approach to offering the bonds was the best approach, so that's what's included. We have a $12 million top amount, just to make sure, there's some fees and other things. We just want to be sure that we have enough in there to cover the full refunding. One of the key parameters is a 2.98% maximum true interest cost for the new bonds, with a minimum target savings of 4% of the present value of the remaining 2011 series. So, those are triggers. If by chance those triggers aren't met, you're not obligated to go forward with the refunding. You can decide at that point to wait. And would, in essence, you would wait at that point in time if those triggers aren't met. And so, that ensures that the bonds aren't refunded unless there is a positive, realization of positive savings back to the city. So, we have those documents attached for your review. We do think, from a fiscal perspective, that even though at this point, you're looking at a savings, not a cost, usually we report on costs, the action today doesn't actually cost you anything. There are costs of the municipal advisory recommendation and the professional services from George K. Baum. Those costs are in the bond refunding action and equal 0.3% of the principal amount of the transaction, which is pretty typical, but there isn't a cash outlay at this point in time, and that's very traditional, that the costs of your professional services are actually in with the bond issuance. Let's see, the other aspect that resolution also does include a, formalizes a fiduciary relationship with George K. Baum. We haven't issued revenue bonds in quite some time, so we have a similar agreement for the general obligation bonds, but wanted to be sure and have that. It's a formality you need to have for their professional services associated with a revenue bond, so that's also an exhibit to the resolution that you have. We do, you don't really have a strategic plan component that's directly on target with this. You do have certain goals that deal with meeting target fund balances and other financial aspects, but we really, I really felt like in looking at this, it kind of relates to the highest quality of services, because if you're able to save dollars on something you're doing and keep the quality where you want, you can apply those dollars. You can either improve your financial position or apply those into improving a service. So, in essence, this is a benefit to the utility fund, and hopefully, and I think, will result in a better overall service. So, that's how we think it meets the strategic plan conformance. And with that, you have a couple options. Approve Resolution Number 17-7477, which authorizes the offering of sale of the water and sewage system revenue refunding bonds, Series 2017, including the fiduciary agreement for advisory services with George K. Baum, or don't approve it at this time. I'd be happy to take any questions you have. And again, David Artterbury with George K. Baum is with us, and if you have specific technical questions that are over my head, and you may, he'd be happy to answer them for you.
Questions? Okay. If there are no questions or discussion, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 17-7477, authorizing the offering for sale of water and sewage system revenue refunding bonds, Series 2017, including the approval of the fiduciary agreement for municipal advisory services specific to this revenue bond refunding action with George K. Baum &amp; Company. Second.
Okay, my motion, and a second to approve Resolution 17-7477. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. 7.2.
7.2, Beechcraft Road Improvement Project Authorization. 7.2A, approve Resolution Number 17-7480, adding the Beechcraft Road Improvement Project to the city's 2018 capital improvement plan. 7.2B, approve Resolution Number 17-7470, authorizing the improvement or re-improvement of certain main trafficways within the city of Salina, Kansas, and providing for the payment of costs thereof.
Mr. Coeck.
I'll go ahead and get started, and if I mess something up, Greg can help me out. Over the course of the summer, we've had a study session prepared by the Salina Airport Authority and previous action that you guys have approved, adding Beechcraft Road as a main trafficway and approving a contract so that the airport authority could issue temporary bonds to finance the improvements on Beechcraft Road. Tonight, we're before you to actually add Beechcraft Road to the capital improvement plan for 2018, and then subsequently approve the contract, authorizing improvement and re-improvement of the main trafficway, Beechcraft Road, and providing payment thereof through general obligation bonds. Specifically, on August 9, the Board of Directors Salina Airport Authority adopted a resolution approving issuance of not to exceed $1.5 million in general obligation bonds and temporary notes, so the authority could pay for the cost of certain capital improvements at the Salina Regional Airport. And as we discussed earlier, Beechcraft Road is a gateway to the city, receiving several visitors to the city through their general aviation and corporate facility, and also in proximity to the campus of Kansas State University Polytech. It is a main trafficway connecting the airport authority to Centennial Road, which is a main thoroughfare in southwest Salina for the city. On August 28, the City Commission adopted an ordinance, 17-10896, unconditionally approving the airport authority to issue the temporary financing to improve Beechcraft Road. And then, we've also got a proposal, 17-7480, which adds the Beechcraft Road to the improvements to Beechcraft Road to our capital improvement plan for 2018. It provides for the permanent financing or to repay the Salina Airport Authority for the temporary funds to complete the project. The total funds will cover the design, the inspection, as well as the construction of the project. And I stand for questions if you guys.
Questions? No questions from an engineering standpoint, but from the CIP standpoint, is there any, does this pretty much leave the rest of the CIP alone? We're not pulling anything else that we had originally contemplated for that CIP 2018?
Yeah, at this point, we definitely don't see the need to pull anything out. I think, if I remember right, the estimated debt service is around $105,000, somewhere in there, per year. That's definitely a project we can put in. I think, at this point, there's no need to pull anything out. What we have to watch as we move forward, more so if we should consider adding a lot of other projects that we don't anticipate today, is where are we going to be with the final streetscape cost? Where are we going to be with the final river debt service? And how many bonds are going to be issued for the final of that project? And then also, as we go forward with just the downtown project, is there going to be any use of the sales tax needed relating to any debt service payments in the long-term, or short-term or long-term future? Those are, all those are a little bit unknown. I think as we get about two more years out, we'll have a little better clarity on those capital projects, where we're at, and probably the downtown as well. So, we have good plans for all those things, but I would want to be careful adding a lot of projects in the future. This is actually a pretty small project as a whole, and again, $100,000 to $105,000 in debt service isn't a lot, but if we were at project number eight, nine, or 10 that we didn't anticipate with that, I'd be getting, starting to sweat a lot more than I am right now. So, that would be an issue, but as of right now, I think this one's fine. It fits. I don't see it by itself having any real impact on the CIP, and I really think, I agree with the reasons behind it. I think it's a really, really good project.
Okay. And just since it's now CIP material now, financing GO bonds, financing or funding source, identified funding source, sales tax?
Yeah, it would be GO bonds, and in all likelihood, it would be sales tax. It could be property tax. I guess when we, when we get to that point, we're still going to be probably a couple years off of a debt service payment. We'll look, we would ideally look sales tax first, property tax second, but it, you know, it may depend if we're pretty aggressive and have a really strong sales tax capital improvement plan, and the general funds really healthy, and we have the capacity there, we might look at that as well. But it would be definitely GO bonds, which means your property tax is the backing of it in essence, so that's the ultimate funding source if you need that. But we always will look sales tax first for capital improvement.
But the anticipation would be not to raise property taxes to do this, obviously.
Oh, yeah, there'd be no anticipation to raise property taxes. If we, if we actually thought that that would in any way need to be an issue, we would be addressing that today. And just to kind of give you, I know you kind of know how much revenue the property tax would bring in, this would be a little shy of a quarter of a mill, but we don't anticipate that need.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion on Resolution 17-7480.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 17-7480, adding the Beechcraft Road Improvement Project to the city's 2018 capital improvement plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 17-7480. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Same sign. Okay. Need a motion on Resolution 177470.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 17-7470, authorizing the improvement or re-improvement of certain main trafficways within the city of Salina, Kansas, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on Resolution 177470. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign. Okay. We have no development business, other business.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to make a few comments in respect to the commemoration of 9/11, and kind of with the local, with the local appeal, if you will. You know, I think we recognize on September 11th now for the last 15 years, of course, the first year being 16 years ago, that there was tremendous sacrifice and bravery exhibited by first responders in New York City and in Washington, DC, and it actually happens day after day across the country, every day of the year. You know, we ask an awful lot from our police officers and paramedics and firefighters, and I just want to ask that when you're out and about, it's great that everybody recognizes and appreciates what our first responders do, but what I really hope that people will do is when they see a fire truck, or a paramedic, or a police officer that's on their way to an accident or something, please pull over and give them the road. And when you pull up upon an accident or an emergency scene, be aware that these people are trying to pay attention to taking care of people that are in an emergency and maybe sometimes aren't always looking out for themselves. And so, you know, as we remember the heroic actions of September 11th, 2001, I just hope that we can, and ask everyone to just be a little more vigilant in being around some of our first responders as they do that very hard and difficult work, and let's help keep them safe.
Well said. Commissioner?
Thank you. I have just one question before we close the meeting. We have our meeting at the regular time next week, or is it a holiday?
Next week, you have off. We, the, I believe that's correct. I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I believe that's the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference, and so no meeting is scheduled for next week, so it'll be two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Just so you wouldn't show up next week.
I'm glad you did that. I would have been right here with you, Commissioner.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential legal matters with legal counsel pursuant to the attorney-client privileged communications with legal counsel exception KSA 45-7319B2 for 20 minutes. The open meeting will resume in this room at 4:55 PM.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign.
Commissioners, we do anticipate the possibility that you may choose to come out and have a public action. So with, I want to make sure that the public understands that, that the access TV folks understand that, and that media representatives also understand that. Normally, we would say we don't, wouldn't anticipate that, but we anticipate at least the possibility today, so I want to make sure they're all noticed. If they want to wait around 20 minutes and see, then to get the opportunity.
We'll recess into executive session. We're back in session, and it's 5:00.
Okay. I will, Madam Mayor, if I may, I would like to make a motion to add an item 8.1 to today's agenda.
Second.
And then, do I need to describe the...
8.1.
The item, or just to add an item?
Best probably to describe the item, just very generally.
All right, then I will like to add an item 8.1 for the record, to consider the initiation of a zoning map amendment that would change the zoning classification of the Ambassador Hotel site at 1616 West Crawford Street from C6, heavy commercial to C5 commercial.
Second.
Or amended, a second.
Amended, okay, amended. We have an amended motion before us and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The Ambassador Hotel, it's formerly the Holiday Inn Holiday Home site on West Crawford, is zone C6 heavy commercial. In staff's research, we determined that in 1980, the property owners submitted applications to plat this property and rezone it to C6 heavy commercial. At that time, the planning staff recommended that the property be rezoned C5 instead, because the C5 zoning was more consistent with the zoning and uses of nearby property. But there was a majority recommendation to approve C6 zoning, subject to plating, and on September 18th, 1980, the City Commission approved an ordinance rezoning this property to C6 heavy commercial. The property was purchased by Omahaw Hotel Incorporated, and they constructed a Holodome and Convention Center on the property. We wanted to point out to you that hotels and motels are permitted use in both C5 and C6 districts. We've had a number of ownership changes and branding changes on the property, and we have recently been contacted by a party who's interested in turning this property into an indoor mini storage facility and constructing additional mini storage units on the site. Planning staff reviewed that proposal, took note of the fact that West Crawford is identified as a gateway corridor, an impact street in the comprehensive plan, and that C6 zoning, the mini storage, would be a permitted use, whereas under C5, it would be a conditional use, which would require the approval of a specific plan for the property. And so we, as a staff, felt this issue should be brought to your attention, so you'd be aware of the options that you have. And one of those options, should you choose, would be that a zoning map change can be initiated by a property owner, the planning commission, or the governing body. And it's within your authority, if you wish today, to by motion direct staff to initiate a zoning map amendment that would downzone this property from C6 to C5. That would then require a public hearing and approval of a conditional use permit to allow redevelopment of this site as a mini storage facility. In the alternative, you could decide to take no action and leave the current C6 zoning in place. And you certainly would have the option, if you wanted to give additional direction to staff in regards to other protections or other options for addressing the gateway and impact street aspects of this. We would think that the zoning map amendment would be the first step, but if there are follow-up steps that you think also need to be done to address development in this corridor, that is within your purview as well.
Mr. Andrew, would that action for further protection of that entry corridor, gateway corridor, impact street, that higher level of scrutiny, would that be a zoning text amendment?
It would be a zoning text amendment, but one of the aspects of any time you have an overlay, it also has a geographic component to it. So it would be two parts. One part would be the actual text of what the overlay might consist of in terms of development standards, permitted or non-permitted uses. The other aspect of that would be to give staff direction as to the geographic scope of that overlay, such as so many feet deep off of Crawford Street, or starting it at some cross street back to I-135 or whatever, but if there was discussion about using an overlay district as a tool, then it would have a geographic component to it. So there would be not only the text change, but if there are property owners who would potentially be affected by the overlay, they would be needed to be notified so that they understand the geographic coverage.
Okay. If this commission were favorable to that overlay process, could general, could a general direction be given to, say, between the, between Centennial Road or between the I-135 overpass and Broadway, and then leave it to the discretion of the planning commission through their deliberations to determine if that needs to be...
Yeah, it would always be a good idea to start large and fine-tune, then to start too small, and then decide you want to expand it.
Right.
But if we had a general, general scope of the overlay area that you wish to address, then that would allow us to start with an area.
Would that, would the geographic area that I described be something that, in your opinion, would be a good area, or should it be larger than that?
Well, that'd be a pretty big chunk to be talking about.
I mean, it doesn't need to go, to fit within the gateway or impact street.
Our interpretation of what the gateway is, is leading from I-135 to Broadway.
To Broadway, okay.
That is, that is the gateway leading into the heart of the city, so...
And that would be completely consistent with the comprehensive plan and...
That is correct.
And the, and the goals and objectives of that.
Right, because the intersection of Broadway and Crawford is identified as a high-impact intersection, and then the section between Broadway and I-135 is identified as an impact street.
Okay, and then that overlay would be, it would be at the discretion of the planning commission to determine what uses would be...
It would ultimately be your decision. They would help fine-tune it for you and make a recommendation, but the final list of uses, the final geographic boundaries, would be your decision.
Do the uses need to be determined today?
They don't need to be determined today. We would flesh that out in the draft of the text amendment. What we'd want to be sure that we had, we want to make sure that we have a draft, a proposal, that at the point of time that we advertise it for hearing, that any interested party can know what's being proposed.
And in the past, we've looked at these in other locations as well? And so we have...
We have a North Ohio Corridor Overlay District. It has a list of prohibited uses and a narrowed list of permitted uses, and it has some specific development standards. And then we have a South Ninth Street Corridor Overlay that starts just south of Schilling and runs down to Waterwell. And those are two existing overlays that we have.
Okay.
The one that's shown on the, on the map on North Ninth, is that, did you say that was one as well?
The only overlay districts we currently have is the North Ohio and the South Ninth.
Okay.
Yep. And our goal would be to, if you so directed, that we would try to emulate what we did with those two overlay districts in terms of...
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay. I was anticipating that you might be ready. Okay, well, Madam Mayor, I would go ahead and start out with a motion to direct staff to initiate a zoning map amendment that would downzone the property at 1616 West Crawford from C6 to C5, which would require a public hearing, and to also direct staff to initiate a zoning text and geographic amendment, to have the planning commission deliberate on an overlay district from I-135 to Broadway, to be consistent with the direction of the comprehensive plan.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, sounds good to me. Have a motion and a second to, I'm not going to try to redo that.
I wouldn't either.
I know what you said, but I'll say it again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign. Okay. Okay. Are we to recess back into executive session?
If you would, please, yes. Same motion. I believe 10 minutes is probably...
Do we need to reread that?
I hope not, because I don't have the long version. Okay. I could give you a summary. I move that we reconvene into executive session to discuss confidential legal matters with legal counsel pursuant to the attorney-client privileged communications with legal counsel exception KSA 45-7319B2 for 10 minutes, and reconvene at 5:20 PM.
Second. Okay. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign.
We won't be taking any action?
Correct, Commissioners. We do not expect to take any action after this. Thank you.